Good morning, everybody. I'm Audrey Allen, and on behalf of all of the Planning Commissioners, I welcome you to today's Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, December 10th, and it is 9:00 a.m. Before we get going, I must read to you. I know you all like that. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public, and members of the public may attend in person, and the meetings are also virtual, and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. For public comment, Lyon County allows alternatives for them. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in a few ways, including by dialing *9 from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak. To unmute yourself, dial *6. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to the county clerk@lyon-county.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" on the subject line. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at 27 South Main Street, Yerickton, Nevada 89447. But all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission within 24 hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person, like you all are, at this building, the Greg Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, 27 South Main Street, Yerickton. And we will take action on all items unless otherwise noted, and no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place your electronic devices, your cell phones, etc., in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order in order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We won't restrict comments by the general public based, unless it's, well, they've got to be reasonable. They may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but not restrict comments based on viewpoint. So roll call. We have got Connie.
Here.
Okay, we have got Mark.
Here.
We've got Ralph.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
And we've got Shannon.
Here.
And we don't have Loretta Sell. Are you on Zoom? There she is. I see you. So we do have a quorum. So, Michael, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so now it is time for public participation or public comment, and like I said, no action will be taken unless it's on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission in chambers may approach a podium and speak on matters related to Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. All speakers are asked to state their name for the record, and those in chamber are asked to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The Commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the chair to calendar the matter for a future Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission will not restrict your comments based on viewpoint, as stated before, and the same applies to public comment on each agenda item. And we, the chair, may reopen public comment at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until it's agendized. Is there any public comment? Okay. I see none. So moving on, we're going to item four. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda, and if so, I'll hear a motion to adopt it.
I mean that we accept the agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any opposed? I mean, any abstentions? Excuse me. Okay, we're gonna go on to item five.
Chair, before we do that, we do have to ask for public comment since that was mentioned.
On who?
On the adoption of the agenda.
We did, we did.
I don't think we asked for public comment.
Well, we had to ask for a public comment on the agenda. Okay.
Any, any action?
All right. Thank you for that reminder.
Thanks.
Is there any public comment on the agenda? See none. It passes as was proposed and seconded.
I think so.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting of November 12th? Does anybody have any? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I motion to accept the meeting minutes from the November meeting.
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify. Now, okay. Is there any public comment on this item? See none. Thank you. I'm pointing at you. We have motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Are there any advisory board reports?
Senator, I'd just like to mention that Smith Valleys was canceled because they were having a book sale in our meeting, so they could not hold our meeting this week.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that. Let's move on to public hearing items. Item 7A, for possible action. We're being asked to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the request from Miles Minerals for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation from Title 10 District of RR3, Third Rural Residential District, 5 acres, to the Title 15 District of the EMU Employment Mix Use, located at 3270 and 3090 Twain Avenue in Silver Springs, for two parcels totaling approximately 4.67 acres, APM 018-364-01 and 018-364-02, PLC 2024-064. And our staff planner is Lisa Nash. Hi, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
All right, so today we're here to look at an application for a zoning map amendment for Miles Minerals. So the applicant's request is to change the current zoning into parcels, which total 4.67 acres from the Title 10 District of RR3, which is the Third Rural Residential District, 5 acres minimum, to Title 15 District of EMU Employment Mix Use. So the properties are located at 3270 and 3090 Twain Avenue in Silver Springs. They, you can see where they're located on here, and they are relatively flat in geography. So I wanted to point out, and it'll show better on the next slide, but the, these parcels are kind of in line with the end of the runway of the Silver Springs Regional Airport. And this map shows it a little bit better. You can see on the character district map where the airport is in reference to this. And this is in the suburban character district for Silver Springs and is in the employment master plan. I want to go back for just a second. So you can see that the bulk of this area is all employment based on the map. The airport is in the purple area, which is quasi-public, and then there's different zones around it. We have a little bit, the red is commercial. We have suburban residential and low-density residential to the south, and that little green spot over there, that's designated as parks. So when we look at the zoning, the zoning request is shown up on those plans. The change to EMU would match the existing properties to the east and southeast of the parcels, directly to the north against the freeway, or sorry, highway, neighborhood commercial, and then heading down a little bit more west, you're going to see a little bit of heavy industrial. And then directly south, a number of those parcels are rural residential. So currently, the rural residential don't fit within the employment district. This was part of the overall mapping. And although these are bounded against residential, it would bring them in close compliance with the master plan. So we'll go right on into the findings. These are the normal findings we consider when we're looking at a zoning amendment. And I wanted to discuss a few things about them. The description for Silver Springs specifically says the highway frontages are primarily mixed-use commercial, employment, and industrial. That's what is along the highway, and this is just the next lot back, so it does make sense that it is. And it is an allowed, EMU is the allowed, one of the allowed zoning districts within the employment master plan land use area. So going on to the next. The parcels are located within the Silver Springs Mutual Water Company Service District. However, they are not located within the Lyon County Sewer District. That boundary is just adjacent to the east, and the applicant could apply for inclusion into that in the future if they wanted, but that inclusion's never guaranteed. Otherwise, they would be required for whatever kind of development, if it requires it to go for onsite sewage disposal on that property. But with that, we're not seeing any additional need for public services, and this utility district would make the decision if this is a good fit to come into the area. So the last one, finding C, we do feel it's consistent with the master plan designation of employment, more so than rural residential is currently, and it would be identical to the properties to the east and support what we would consider a consistent development pattern. We don't, we do feel that the presence of the RR3 Rural Residential to the south is going to require what code, full code requirements for additional screening setbacks and everything for what would be an mixed use right up against residential adjacency. So that again is dependent on the future development plan for the property, which we, I don't believe the applicant has an idea at this point where exactly they're going to go with it. They just would like more opportunities and to match with the existing properties. So with that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval if you're so inclined, and I have a recommended motion up on screen, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Planning Commissioners, do you have any questions for Lisa? And we'll start with you, Shannon.
Yes, just a quick one on the question about the utilities.
Yes.
So at this point, they would have to have a leach filled. And if they come with a further application, then it would maybe condition that they become part of the Lyon County utility if it's deemed possible. Okay.
That is a possibility. Anything they would come forward with would most likely require, potentially, sorry, Lisa Nash, Senior Planner, require either a CUP, conditional use permit, or an administrative design review, and both of them could condition that. It's also going to depend on if the property is big enough. They would need a commercial system type. So there would be a lot of hurdles for that, but it would be addressed in future planning and time.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'll pass.
Ralph?
Nothing.
Mark?
I'm looking at your plan. I don't see the master plan overlay for that particular property.
Oh, for the airport overlay or there?
For the site, for the master plan, because even the, it says the proposed zoning designation is still going to be RR5 Rural Residential. That's what's identified.
Which page are you?
I'm on page 18.
I'm sorry if there's an error in my report. The proposed change is to EMU, not to RR5.
Okay, so that lot was master planned to be EMU.
That, that entire area is employment, and if you look on the land use tables for employment, EMU is one of the permitted zoning districts. Changing it to an additional or a different, our rural residential would not be in compliance with the master plan.
That's what I was just trying to see, the master plan overlay on that. It's still, there's rural residential right below it, 5 acre minimum.
Correct. Okay, so I'm not sure what page, but if you go to the last page of my report, finding A, you'll, at the top of the page, you'll see the tables for what zoning districts are allowed in employment. So currently, when I look at the zoning, currently, some of the properties are not in compliance with that master plan. But again, the changes that were made, the master plan overlays that were laid on, did put some properties out of compliance. But if you look at the land use chart, you can see EMU is an approved zoning district within employment master plan.
I understand.
Madam Chair, can I ask another question?
Sure. I just want to, so I just want to clarify. So this is going to bring this piece of property into more compliance. So, this is going to bring this piece of property into more compliance, although there are some properties adjacent to it that will remain out of compliance. This property's not tied to those, so this one will be coming into compliance with the master plan and other properties adjacent to it would have to come on their own accord.
Only if they choose to put, change something, they're allowed to develop it as RR3, which is currently set up as the far, five acre minimum, which is equivalent to RR5 and Title 15. Those people, although they're, the zoning is technically out of compliance with master plan, they have every right to develop it as rural residential. But if anybody wanted to make changes to the zoning, change the size, we would encourage them to come into one of the zoning that are allowed within employment to be more compliant. So, we never want to see, you need to stay the same or improve, never go backwards in compliance.
Thank you for the questions.
Because that was my, my question on this map that you had there. They're not in white. And I would show that.
Oh, I meant that then, I didn't, I only changed them into white to show what's proposed on the proposed zoning designation, the two on one page. I didn't change it on the larger.
Yeah, I was still trying to see the master plan overlay.
Okay, Ralph has, has a.
So, basically, all this is the, the picture on the right should have said EMU where it says RR5 and that, that's what this is.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't change the label. I just changed the color.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't catch that.
No, that's, that's.
I just made the colors and, and I didn't catch that the text was still there. I apologize for the confusion.
Are you clear now, Mark?
Not really, because I'm still, I'm still looking to see where the master plan designation was.
Well, the master plan.
On that lot.
Doesn't show on, these are zoning alone.
I understand it. But when you move, change something off of a master plan.
We're not changing off the.
That's why I wanted to see where the master plan was overlay on that property.
That is the two pictures on the page before. Let me go back. Here's the master plan on the right-hand map. The master plan is employment. That's the gray, the little red triangle.
So, all that property below there is, is EMU?
No, is employment master plan.
That whole area below it?
All of the gray.
Okay.
Is employment master plan.
Okay, that makes sense. All right.
Okay, yeah. And I do apologize. Thank you.
It was just a gray area.
I didn't even look at the text, and I very much apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, so to speak. Connie, do you have any questions?
None.
What about you, Loretta?
None.
Thank you. Okay, we have no questions from, any more questions from Lisa? Is the, is the owner or representative here, and would you like to speak?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Bill Miles. I'm the manager of Miles Minerals. So, if you do have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Obviously, there's a truck stop being built on the northeast corner of that roundabout. I was just fortunate to, you know, I've had this property for a while. I think it's an ideal place for another truck stop. I knew truck stops like to be competitive with other stops. When US Highway fifty was developed, we got some egress from the roundabout. We worked closely with M Doc because they did not want particularly right in, right out, farther on down the highway. So, we've done a lot of, we did a lot of planning work on the original, almost twenty acres that I own there to make sure everything would be copesthetic, easier to development. Utility-wise, they're putting utilities down Opal Avenue right now to the new truck stop, both sewer and water. I own water rights, and when I changed the zoning before and put the property, the additional twenty acres that I have there already, when I changed, put those in the service areas for water and sewer, I did buy EDUs, equivalent drawing units from Silver Springs. And again, I do have water rights, and I looked, worked closely with Matt Martenson on water there in Silver Springs. And it would be the intent that these parcels that I bring in to the utility district also. So, if you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miles, starting with you, Connie?
No.
Mark?
I'm here.
Okay, all from Michael and Shannon. What about you, Loretta?
No.
No?
I'll add one other thing. I did attend the Silver Springs Advisory Board last week, and they did approve it also. So, I somehow that they.
Well, thank you for that.
To your notes, just out of courtesy. I've been around Lyon County a long.
Right. Okay, Loretta, do you have anything? I never did get a yes or a no.
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, have you read all the conditions and you're okay with all of this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I own two parcels that are zone.
All right.
RR5. I don't even have five acres.
All right, thank you.
Getting things in compliance and straightened out, I hope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there, and, okay, Lisa.
Senior Planner, I just want to add, this is a zoning map amendment at this point, so there are no conditions. We can't.
Right. Okay, thank you for that. Is there any public participation on this project? Same none. I'll, I'll call for a motion. Okay, Ralph will do it.
Based on the aforementioned findings, I moved at the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the request by Miles Minerals LLC for a zoning map amendment to amend the zoning map designation from the Title 10 District of RR3, Third Rural Residential District, five acres, to titles, to the Title 15 District of EMU Employment Mixed Use on two parcels totaling approximately four point six seven acres, located at thirty-two seventy and thirty-two ninety, Mark Twain Avenue, or just Twain Avenue in Silver Springs, APMs zero one eight dash three six four dash zero one and zero one eight dash three six four dash zero two, PLC two zero two four dash oh six.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did you get the second? Mark, okay, it's Mark. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're being asked to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the request from Lyon County School District for a conditional use permit to place an adult education modular classroom in the Dayton High School, at the Dayton High School, on land subject to RR twenty Rural Residential twenty acre minimum, zoning located at three thirty-five Old Dayton Valley Road in Dayton on an approximate eighty point four five acre parcel, APM zero one six dash two seven one dash eleven, PLC dash two zero two four dash zero five seven. And our staff reporter is planner Louis Carriola.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Morning, Commissioner. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner. So, the request today for a conditional use permit by the Lyon County School District is for a location on the campus of the Dayton High School. The vicinity map here shows a relative location, east and south of Highway fifty. And then across the bridge down Dayton Valley Road, one may access, the main access points to the high school campus on Old Dayton Valley Road and Brakes Water Drive. This image from Google Earth shows the relative location of the proposed modular building, as it's called in the staff report and the submitted materials. I'll touch on some details moving forward. But just to clarify, the actual request, Lyon County Development Code Title fifteen requires a conditional use permit for commercial coaches. We only permit commercial coaches typically, again, with conditional use permits in, in what are seen as public and quasi-public developments, so schools, hospitals, and the like. So, just for clarification, I did want to point out, commercial coaches, technically modular construction would not require a conditional use permit. As previously mentioned, per the assessor's records, the parcel's over eighty acres. And I just included one picture from the applicant's submitted materials for the location for the proposed coach. This image is looking south towards a high school, so again, if we move back, we can see the location of this proposed new coach right along existing parking lot. Moving into the master plan designations, on the right is our character district. All of that area of Dayton is all suburban, meaning there are public utilities and established roadways in place. And the master plan designation is public and quasi-public, which is nice because it's a school. So, in this case, we do have consistency with the existing development and the master. The applicable zoning is RR twenty. I have an error here in my slide here. I see M one, so I'm just going to skip forward and say with the zoning consistency matrix adopted with Title fifteen, the conversion, the applicable zoning for this parcel is rural residential twenty acre. Request details again for the commercial coach. The adult education building is predominantly intended for use by adults looking to get their GEDs. Most of that training for the school district's representative, which is Darrell Bloom, who I spoke to personally about this, is the, the focus for the GED is, is for online students. So, this isn't necessarily being intended for a full classroom. It is a location to pick up printed materials and to take their tests. So, there'll be limited staff here, but they did need a separate building, separate from the actual proper school buildings. I, I, nothing really extraordinary about the image that we have here. Pretty standard commercial coach. It would include, of course, a restroom, and then connections to Lyon County utilities would have to be made as well as the attainment of building permits from Lyon County, an independent review by the fire district. You might note in the staff report, the Lyon County Utility District did make note of an existing sewer line that potentially could be right where the location is proposed. So, that line would have to be, of course, identified first to pick the appropriate locations. The utility district also would have the opportunity to, to make sure capacity was available for both water and sewer. So, the school district would go through the same process as any other private developer. I did skip ahead here in the slides to kind of touch on staff's findings. As, as seen in all the images, this is about as low impact a conditional use permit as planning staff is going to review because the commercial coach is already in the middle of an existing campus. So, the impacts in acre properties are virtually nil. Access already provided by existing access points. So, as a result, staff was able to easily make a recommendation of approval that the planning commission forward that recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And I'm of, of course, available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for?
Of course we do. Louis, okay, we'll start with you then, Shannon.
Good morning, Louis. I just have a quick question, because you made the comment that it's not going to be attended by students, that it's basically just going to be used as a drop-off location, but my question is.
And test.
Yes. But my question would be, would it have any different requirements if it was going to be utilized with people on a regular basis?
I, I think I, I'm, the plan department might have been a bit stricter about counting the actual parking stalls and try and get a better assessment. Per the parking schedule, the maximum number of parking spots would only be five. And that would be based on the fourteen forty square feet of the entire coach. We did not do that because I did speak again to Mr. Bloom about that parking lot and how many stalls were anticipated to be used, and I think that number's on the order of two. So, for that reason, we didn't go into that kind of level of parsing detail. But aside from that, I can't imagine it would have been much more, or any, anything else required that wouldn't be required.
Because my only concern is that we always start with a plan of what something's going to be used for.
Right.
And as the school district changes and needs different things, sometimes it gets adjusted without us looking at that possibility. So, is there something that we are conditioning this with to, to stay within that use? And if it's going to change, then it needs to be rereviewed?
Um, and that's a good question. Again, other than parking, nothing really comes to mind. Because again, this is located in the middle of the existing campus. If this was an independent site, where we might be looking at buffering, at landscaping, at something, you know, that, that was new developed. Yeah.
Okay.
That's all that comes to mind, but it looks like.
So, to answer your question, this is a conditional use permit that would be in densification of use, so they would have to come back in and be applied for another conditional.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything, Michael?
No, I'm good.
What about you, Ralph?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Mark? Connie? Loretta?
No.
Okay, thanks. You know, it's interesting to see that this is just a drop-off point and for testing, because I was kind of getting a different idea that, you know, because it was called a place, to place an adult education modular classroom. You know, so I thought it was going to be an adult education modular classroom.
Louis Carriola, I, I'm not sure if the school district representative is here to, to speak on this, but the truth of the matter is, again, the, the parking would be the only.
All right.
The only difference, if we were looking at a, a regular classroom versus what its intended use is.
Okay.
And again, it's next to a park.
It just makes it, it just, it just makes it fit a little nicer if the name, you know, kind of fit what the project actually is.
No, I think essentially our, our publishing went out with the same description that was submitted by the school district.
All right.
So, we just use the same.
All right, thanks for that. And there's not going to be any impacts to the rapid infiltration basin?
Again, the, the Lyon County Utility District will have to approve the connection. So, if they find any issue with capacity, then that would stall this project, and so that capacity was taken.
All right. Is there, is a representative here, and would you like to speak? You don't have to speak if he covered everything sufficiently.
Armin Baines, Director of Operations for Lyon County School District. Unless you guys have any questions, I'm more than happy sitting back there. We appreciate you guys' time this morning to take a look at the project.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? And your name is, you didn't state it.
Armin Baines.
Okay, Armin Baines. Okay, I see no questions. Is there any public participation on this project? Same none. All hear a motion. Okay, Mark.
Based on the aforementioned findings, I move planning commission recommend approval to the county board of commissioners for the request from Lyon County School District for a conditional use permit to place an adult education modular classroom at Dayton High School on land subject to RR twenty Rural Residential twenty acre minimum, zoning located at three three five Old Dayton Valley Road in Dayton on an approximately eighty point four five acre parcel, APM zero one six dash two seven one dash one one, PLC two oh two four oh five seven.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second already, Loretta. Sorry, it was Connie. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're to item seven C. Okay, we're to item seven C for possible action. Again, we're being asked to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for the requests from Libra Solar for a conditional use permit for an approximate four point seven mile long, three hundred and forty-five kilo V volt generation tie line, they call them genti's connecting the Libra Solar project to the Fort Churchill substation on State of Nevada and Bureau of Land Management land located north and east of existing uh Fort Churchill substations in Mason Valley on portions of five are five parcels measuring approximately a hundred and thirteen point eight acres out of a total acreage of approximately seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight point one three. And now that's an approximation, if I ever heard one. APNs uh zero one four dash zero nine one dash zero seven, zero one four dash one three one dash zero one, zero one four dash one four one dash zero one and through zero three and zero four. PLC two zero two four dash zero seven one, and our staff reporter is Lisa Nash.
Lisa Nash, Senior Planner, thanks for having me. So we are going to go through the Libra Solar CUP request. The applicant is here and also has a presentation.
Thanks.
So this one gets a little bit complicated. There's two parts to what we're looking at today. And these are the five parcels that are in that contain the four point seven acres of lines that are outside of the master planned utility quarters. So the the main portion of it is kind of in the center of all my red notes and the the lots there. That's why there's seventeen thousand plus acres when you add all of them, but the portion that's just affected is the hundred and thirteen. Um, I have added a note here, you can see the three properties. The north or the, yeah, the northwest properties and the southeast property, those are BLM lands. And the two in the center are Nevada lands, so all of this is federally or state owned property. Access to the central portion of the site will be along Sierra Way. And this is kind of going to connect into the substations that are there and possibly the proposed one that's just about ready to get under construction, I believe. There we go. All right, so um the five parcels are going to have the approximately, the blue line here is showing where the genti line will go outside of the master plant, master planned utility quarters. So you can see um where it's cutting through each of the five properties. They are anticipating that the lines are going to be less than two or a maximum of two hundred feet in height and have a maximum two hundred foot wide easement uh along that line. And this portion of the project, along with the lines, would have unpaved uh road access for maintenance and repairs in the future. Oh, I just want to see, so I also added two little blue stars and a red star at the bottom. Those are showing the blue stars are the existing substation or Fort Churchill substations and the red will be the new um substation coming in. So this is um a plan provided by the applicant. I've added a little blew up the detail um to show you the blue box down on the bottom of the plan and is blown up saying access road. That road is going to be how the applicant accept accesses the solar project that this is tying into. These lines are going from the solar project into the substations. And their access is going to come off the two oh eight on the East Walker Road, head down to Reese River Road and then into Mineral County. The reason this is significant is the facility itself is being built in Mineral County and the applicant's going to discuss where that stands and where they are with all their permitting there. But since the access is going through a rural part of our county, it could infect our residents. And as a result, um, working with roads department and the county manager, we have come up with an additional, if you read a condition nine, not one we normally see in a CUP addressing um paving drainage improvements, cattle guards, culverts, everything along that road in order to protect the residents that are there and make this feasible as construction traffic heads through. There will, this is mainly during the construction phase for that project. And it is going to require a road maintenance agreement with the county so that they have to provide traffic control while construction is going. And then uh assuring that the road is returned or acceptably maintained during construction and when they get done at the end. Uh, you will have also seen letters in your packets or that were sent out after the packets were sent out from residents and their concerns. And they have been in discussion with them as well. We have spoken with them repeatedly, so we are trying very hard to make sure we're protecting our residents in this area. That's why there's a little bit of unusual, usually a CUP is all confined to one site, but since there's two components to this, we have this portion down in the south and the portion that's directly the involving the genti. So uh I did ask Manhard to provide this uh slide here, and this is showing artificial mapped utility quarters. So the yellow highlighted areas are what are on our master plan. I wanted to make sure in more detail since the usual plan that we have in our master plans um kind of broad strokes, but this shows that there's actually a thirty-five hundred foot utility quarters and where they exist and making sure that everything that doesn't fall within that, even if it's on federal or state land, that has to come to us for the CUP. Construction of the other parts that are within the quarter within the county require just an ADR, which is normal for construction. So as you can see here, title fifteen, um, the land use is power transmission lines, sixty kilovolts or greater located outside of that designated utility quarter. So um if it was in the utility quarter, it's permitted with an ADR administrative design review. Being outside of the utility quarter, that's what kicks us into the CUP. So I want to talk about the master plan briefly. These five lots fall within two different master plan land use maps. So two parcels on the left are located within the Mason Valley, the north end of the Mason Valley land use plan, and they are designated as agriculture. When we go to look at the ones that are a little further north, they're outside of the Mason Valley District and they are within the general land use north mapping and they're uh master planned as open space there. And you can see that's the dotted kind of hashing. So we have two different areas we're working, but all of the master planning is agricultural or open, and this kind of use is allowed in every district. Uh, power transmission lines utilities are generally allowed in any district, so it's approved, you know, it's approved under the master. Zoning. So the zoning for all five parcels are RR five fifth rural residential twenty acre minimums under title ten, which per our consistency matrix is RR twenty, which is shown on this map. And they're all consistent with that. They are bordering up against the heavy industrial suburban that was recently changed for the new substation and the light industrial that's providing for other infrastructure that's out there. So as usual, we have findings for a conditional use report, and on the next page, I'm going to go into some of the highlights. Um, we do feel this is consistent with master plan contemplated uses within rural residential on a rural uh character districts. There's as I said last, just a moment ago, public utilities, power lines, things like that are allowed in any district, so they are in compliance there. Um, we are going to require the applicant to be responsible for meeting the conditions in this CUP both within the genti area and the county roads that will provide access to the solar fields in Mineral County. We don't feel that the proposed location under construction for the genti line is going to put put any negative impacts. There's no existing residential neighborhoods out in this area. It's all open space or agriculture, um, also adjacent to tribal lands in that area. And we don't feel there will be any noise, traffic or visual nuisance once this is built out and operating. Uh, as I mentioned previously, we will require that maintenance agreement with the county regarding East Walker Road and access to the Mineral County solar project as that will have a direct impact on the residential properties uh along East Walker Road. And additionally, lastly, the applicant's going to be required to meet all of the building codes and the national electric electrical safety code requirements for these kind of lines. We feel that with these proposed conditions, um, this project doesn't promote, isn't anything detrimental to public health, safety and welfare of the residents of Lyon County. So with that, we do feel that staff is able to recommend, based upon the conditions of approval, that the board forward a recommendation to the board of commissioners. Here's a recommended motion. I am available for questions.
Okay, but before the applicant comes up to do a presentation, do you mind if we ask planning commissioners if they have any questions of you? Okay, thank you.
In perfect fashion, I do, Commissioner Sarah. Just on the maintenance package, so the county owns the road currently and will maintain ownership of it. So once it's paved, the applicant will still be in a maintenance agreement to have to maintain that paving, is that correct?
Yes, I'm getting nods from the expert.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Yes, I do. Um, this is regard to the traffic there. I mean, I'm looking at some numbers, I don't know if they're viable or not. But is that road going to hold up? You know, with all that's going on, I mean, that you have farming going on, ranching going on back there, and then I'm looking at traffic levels. I'm really concerned with that.
Let me pass this off to the expert in this field.
They state your name for the record, please, and sign in.
Good morning, Dustin Holman, Lyon County Road Director, for the record. Um, so currently, East Walker Road is a dirt road. That is the reason for the upgrade to to pave the road. We currently blade that road three times a year. The state park is along with the residents that are out there. Um, there's a state park out there right adjacent to the road. And um currently, we're struggling to keep that road in decent shape, maintained. There's a lot of times we're doing it four and five times a year versus our normal.
Right.
Three times a year just because of the load, I mean, the state, the residents as a state parks, the the residences further out. There's there's just absolutely no way to add this type of traffic load with the construction of the solar field. The that that road will be in a in a safe condition. It's a reason for the requirement of the paving, the upgrading of the road. The maintenance agreement will be for the duration of the construction of the solar field. Once that construction's over with, the solar field is built, then that maintenance will fall back to Lyon County. That's what I was looking for.
Thank you, Dustin. Okay, she has a follow up too.
I just want to clarify, I'm sure that, so it will be paved to a commercial level, not to a residential level. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And Michael, what about you, Ralph?
Yeah, I do. Um, I'm looking at the maps and I see there's utility borders all over the place. And I'm wondering why this one has to take this roundabout path to get to the substation when there's a utility quarter that heads right for the substation off the one that's already on to come up to there. Maybe that's for you or for the applicant.
Yeah, I think it's a rogue gun.
Lisa Nash, Senior Planner, I do believe that's a better question asked of the applicant, and they will be coming up shortly to make their.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. What about you, Mark?
Uh, I was out there this morning. And it's a harsh work, I mean, it's it's, but it's a small road to handle three to seven hundred people as well as the farming equipment and everything else going in and out of that. It's beautiful area out there, ag area. Part of the, I I was driving up there and there's actually speed bumps front of some folks' house just to slow the traffic down now. I can't imagine what the speed is going to be out there once you pave that sucker. Because people were honking at me because I was going too slow. And I wasn't going slow. But it wasn't going slow.
Were you doing your Lexus?
But I'm just saying, so you know, that's another concern. I know these people kind of, I've talked to all of them. The speed out there, one thing, there's a lot of traffic, I think, with side by sides and stuff going up that direction anyway, the parks and stuff. Trust that. There is no respect for speed down that road right now. So there has to be something to regulate that speed. I don't care if you gotta put in more speed bombs or something, but they're going to be cranking down there. I promise you. Which is going to create some safety hazards for the farm workers and stuff. That's just something that I think we ought to consider.
Lisa, uh, looks like you had something, Connie.
Uh, how long will it take to complete the project?
Two years, two years for the constructor.
Loretta, do you have anything?
No, actually, I think everyone's covered it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so would you like your applicant, you have something else, okay?
Lisa Nash, Senior Planner, I just want to address, we do recognize we have this problem all over the county with our rural roads. I just cut through Miller Lane today and got passed going ridiculously fast. So it's, it is a problem in most of our paved rural roads. We recognize that part of what roads is requiring to is that traffic plan or traffic management. So it's something we'll have to look at, and we'll probably have similar problems like we do on cutoffs.
I don't think it's just rural roads. I think, I think there's a, there's a sense, I mean, people are just speeding around crazy.
Yeah, I was just using that as an example because it's a low speed for safety. This will have a low speed limit. People are, people are going to people, so we'll do our best to make sure that uh traffic controls and things are put in.
Okay, thank you. So the applicant is here and, okay. State your name for the record and.
Rafiq Albert, Executive Vice President for Lands and Permitting at Revia Power, uh, the developer of um Libra Solar. Okay, thank you. I'm just going to give you a brief overview on the project. Um, Libra Solar is a seven hundred megawatt solar field and seven hundred megawatt battery energy storage system. Uh, both the solar field and the battery are located on BLM land in Mineral County. Uh, the project includes a twenty-four point one mile uh three hundred and forty-five kilovolt genti line um to Fort Churchill Substation. Um, and seventeen and a half miles of that is in Lyon County. Responding to the question about uh why we had to reroute the line to the north there, uh, it was our preference to stay within the corridor, but um the the Department of Wildlife requested that we reroute to the north to minimize impacts to the wildlife management area. So project uh received its environmental clearance in September from BLM. Uh, we received our right of way grant in last month. And we also have a special use permit that's been issued by Mineral County. Uh, so we've now completed all the discretionary permitting through both BLM and Mineral County. Uh, we are currently doing geotechnical assessment on the site. Um, major construction is is planned to start late next year. Uh, some construction activities like paving of the road and some other preliminary work might occur starting summer of next year. Uh, and uh, construction take approximately two years to complete. Uh, primary project access, as was discussed, is off of East Walker Road connecting to Highway two oh eight. Uh, secondary access would be off of uh Highway ninety-five using a private uh a road that's on BLM land, it's not county maintained. Uh, average workforce is four hundred workers per day during the project, um, during the project with a peak of seven hundred. Um, and we are required to prepare workforce housing and transportation plan that'll be coordinated with BLM and with the county. Uh, part of that transportation plan includes uh requiring uh carpooling, requiring offsite parking at a at a location to be determined with the county uh and uh roadway improvements and other other aspects of the plan. Um, I think that, I think that's it for my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Review the conditions of approval and we concur with the the county's requests.
All right, Shannon. Good, thank you. Michael? Michael. Ralph.
Yes, going back to my question. Which part of this project um was the Department of Wildlife worried about the construction or the operation after the construction? Um, the reason I'm asking is it seems like a lot more land would be disturbed by your. Proposed route than would be through the corridor that are maybe has been disturbed and used for that same purpose.
That's a, that's a great question. Uh, they didn't really specify what their concern was. They, they wanted us to. Avoid the central part of the, the wildlife management area to the, to the degree possible. Um, at our current location, we're adjacent to other transmission lines like Greenland West. Um, that is also being developed in the, around the same timeframe. So I think they wanted to group them to avoid having separate lines.
Okay, thank you.
Mark.
Yeah, does Lion County tap into this power source? Will we be using that energy or?
It's going to find out the benefit to Lion County to go through with any of this. Uh, it's going to Nevada Energy, so it'll, it'll.
Anybody in the energy?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Connie. Loretta.
Now.
Hey, thank you. I can see you remembered to sign in. Thank you. Uh, did you get a chance to read all of the uh? All of the conditions and are you good with all of them and?
Right.
Okay, and you'll have this ongoing relationship with Lyon County.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we, we still have to go through the grading and building permit processes and um, we're gonna continue outreach to. The local property owners. You've been doing that since twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um. Is there any public uh comment on this project? Okay. We have some in chambers.
My name is Beverly Smith. Hey, live on East Walker Road. Our house is at the speed bump.
Thank you.
That he, that Commissioner Jones. Talked about. We're about half a mile up, up Highway two oh eight. Some of the things that the gentleman from Arriba talked about is not true. They talked to us in the very beginning. We haven't heard a word from them in probably two years. We don't want solar plant out there in the beginning, but we have no choice. We found out. So paving this road is the only option. It is a dirt road, as Justin said. The speed out there is an issue on a daily basis for us. Our house is thirty feet literally from the road. We own property on both sides. We farm both sides of the road. We have horses, we have animals. There's abundant wildlife out there. Arriba Power is proposing on their environmental impact study to the BLM that eight hundred and fifty five round trips. Of vehicles per day is gonna go by our house. That's seventy an hour. That's basically one car a minute. The speed, once this road gets paved, is gonna be crazy. We need more speed bumps out there during this construction, especially. We're asking that they reduce the speed to fifteen miles an hour. It's currently twenty five. Regularly, we have people going forty five. They blow right through those speed bumps. It's, there's dust and dirt. We do have some grappings there. They have kind of deteriorated a bit over the years. Um. We do a lot of stuff outdoors. Arriba is proposing that they're gonna do seven days a week, twelve hours a day for two years of this. Traffic by our, by our house. We also have experience through the construction of the state park out past us that there's parking from. The employees that go out there to work, we're parking in front of our house. So we're asking that they prohibit parking for the first mile and a half. Of the road. I did submit um my concerns previous, so you do have that email. Um. The other thing is, I ask that you don't give Libra Power any leeway on what you require them. The county and the road department is asking them to do. I've lived here. I lived at that. I, we've lived on East Walker Road for twenty years. I've lived in this valley for almost thirty. I've seen the mine, promised the moon, and nothing has happened. They've made on everything they promised this community and the Libra Solar, the power, the, the vehicle. Transportation that they're gonna have to is, is gonna affect the whole community and not just us. The state park promised us stuff when they put the park in.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Anyway, that hasn't happened either.
Thank you. Hey, we have more public comment.
My name is Wes Smith, Beverly's husband. To pick up where Beverly left off, the park was planning on alternate routes, still hasn't happened. Um. With their traffic. From the park, it's the everyday person RVing. They dropped into a ditch, one of their trailers, because these people don't understand the narrow culvert crossings now that exist, which will be changed. We've had trailers drop off in front of our house because people hitting the speed bumps too fast, as Beverly mentioned. Um. If the road is paved in front of our house, um, right now it's a dirt road, the heavy rains we've had in the last, within the last three years. Um, above us. There's no drainage control. It runs down the road. It runs into our fields. It runs into our driveway. I personally, at my expense, have. Used piled dirt, it's fixed it. If they raise this, they're saying four inches of pavement over eight inches of base, which is a foot. Water, again, will come into our property, so they need to maintain the level, dig it down to finish at where it is. And now the dirt roads, at least when it rains, absorb some of the moisture. When it's paved, it's gonna be a river, which I have videos of it in front of our house as a dirt road when the heavy storms hit. So. The only option is three irrigation ditches there that it drains into privately owned for farming, including people with grow crops, et cetera. Human food. If that's blocked with ditch, with uh, uh, bar ditches, then it runs down below our property sloped from the BLM down. To a point where our neighbors' properties pick up. There is no drainage except into fields. Until it hits Highway two oh eight. So bar ditches are fine on average year when these heavy storms hit, and if there's irrigation water running in the ditches at capacity. There has to be some thought process of where this is gonna go. Um. The other thing is my concern is the speed. I'm the sheriff out there. I've confronted people. Their Libra is out there now with their group. I've stopped some of them because they fly by our house. Park maybe a hundred yards up the road and wait for the group to get there. I went up and confronted them. Got just feedback that it was not pleasant. Shouldn't be my job to do this. We called the sheriffs. They don't have the manpower to patrol this road. They say one sheriff covers Smith Valley and the south end of Lion County. A couple of times it did make it here and they did stop somebody, but point is. If we can't afford, I mean, these trucks aren't coming just to our road. They're coming through Mason Valley, uh, different directions, who knows where. And if we can't, can't afford to patrol this with a sheriff, perhaps impact these, when people come into areas that we can't afford to hire more. They need to pay for this. For control of their work, we know it's a two-year project. It could be more. That's what they're asking.
Thank you for your comments. I see more public comment.
My name's Jeff Lamory. My family owns and operates the ranch at the corner of East Walker and two oh eight. I'm not in favor of paving the road. I believe, just like the Smiths. Paving the road is gonna exponentially increase the speed. We witness that on a daily basis, just with the impact of people going to the state park. Majority of those people. Have one-time pickups, fifth-wheel travel trailers and are not necessarily the best drivers. When you. My expectation would be that Loomis. Mitch Burns and company are going to. Does. Approve the design process. That would be exactly like a developer would do. With the construction of that road. And with that said, I also expect. That the storm water. Is gonna be maintained on the county property because we're not gonna take your swarm water on our land. There are, there are a couple of irrigation ditches that cross East Walker Road. We happen to own water that is in one of those. We're gonna start irrigating March first. You're not gonna impact me or slow us down from irrigating. We have the right to that water. There's other counties in the state of Nevada. I'd expect you to reach out to Humble County, Elko County, Eureka County. That has lots of mine maintenance road agreements with other big entities. Not ask. Reach out to them and see what their road maintenance agreement is with Newmark Parry. You can put water trucks. You can use traffic control. You can use magnesium chloride. Yeah, I believe there's a lot to do because I'm gonna be on that corner a heck of a lot longer. And those guys are gonna be out there. And I, I expect to be able to operate that in, in an everyday fashion. So I got trucks coming in all the time. Bringing commodities, hauling cattle, fertilizer. We worked, so. I. I think it can be done in a manageable way. And that is my expectation. But we should not have to absorb the storm water and we don't, I don't have the impact. There's other ways to work with that road. In the duration of this construction. That are in other parts of the state of Nevada that have lots of county roads that access BLM properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamory. There more public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Bert Ryan. I'm the uh General Manager for Walker River Irrigation District. Um, I've been working with uh communications with Libra Solar for a little while, but I've also been in constant communication with several other entities. In the Greenland Project area on the north end of the valley here, and I was wondering if the county can actually. Um, assist in facilitating that there could be conditions within your approvals that. Make it so that not only Libra Solar, but the other entities that are in the surrounding areas can work with the irrigation district and other agencies directly together. There's a lot of overlap in dealing with several different engineer firms and all of the drainage on the northwest side of this valley, so which encompasses pretty close about twenty thousand acres. Drains in that general location. The reason that's, that's never been developed down over there is one because of what its designation was, but two because it's actually just a giant low-line floodplain area. So infrastructure that is proposed from not just this project, but several other projects are going to impact everybody down here significantly. Some of the drainage uh issues that we have in that general vicinity is the type of composite that's there, you know, a lot of heavily laden and alkaline. And the river corridor itself, but again. The irrigation district only has jurisdiction to do the work within our boundaries and we basically end within our district boundaries right there at Julian, Field Julian Ranch where. The Wabaska Drain and Old Wabaska converge back into the Walker River. As you guys drive down ninety five, you will see water within our large drainage components. That's because the river does not allow. Water to drain very fast, so we have backwater. High water years like in twenty twenty three, twenty seventeen. We have significant flooding that occurs on some of these properties and now you're putting. Solar fields, power plants, five hour, five substations in the general area. I'm trying really hard to work with these folks. But it would be very helpful if the district, if the district could get some assistance from Lion County with being a part of. Some of the planning phases and make sure that there's not too much overlap on some of these. Again, this property extends to the south. We do own one of the three uh ditches, the three canals that are in this reach, the high ditch that's there. Our only request is that we can be a part of the planning process on that. Um, we can help be a representative of point of access for the. Independent ditch companies that are there, the Greenwood and the Hall, as well as the high ditch, but I just. Would be remiss not to mention that we like to be a part of. Whatever we can so that there's no issues or concerns moving forward. And we would be uh appreciative of anything that the county can do to help us out with this process as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Would the board like to, uh, having heard some of the public comment and some of the concerns with the, is the. What is the board's pleasure before we call the question? Do you want to discuss a little bit?
Yeah.
Uh, put any uh recommendations or?
Yes.
Condition, okay. Okay, well. We'll start with Connie.
It just seems with this whole project that it hasn't been thoroughly thought out for the environment, the residents. Uh. I'm leaning towards some, you know, a continuation. Until, you know, the speed, the roads, everything. I, I don't think it's been thoroughly thought out and uh the communication between the. Solar Panel Company and, you know, the residents. You got seven hundred workers coming in. I mean, that's actually. You know, it's like your whole neighborhood's changed, yeah.
Mark.
I have a real issue with the hours of operation. You know, you're, you're subjecting our. Our people, our, our residents to twelve hours of construction a day, seven days a week. That's not right. I mean, where's their peace of mind? Where, where's their, their quality of life? On this project. I think it's wrong. I, for one. Will not vote for this thing if we don't have, we can't curtail or the developer can't. Accommodate some lesser hours of work so these people can have at least some quiet time in there. On their life, and they're ranch people, you know, this is not.
We need to keep our discussion among ourselves, okay?
Oh, I thought you, I had it, well, she was looking at some questions.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm discussing with you. I'm just looking out there, okay? So I am concerned about that and I know that. When we attended the last Commissioners meeting, they put some restrictions on hours or operation because of the community that was in there. And they voted to either change those. Or don't get the project approved. And that's. That's kind of my position. I think we have to consider the people that are living out there.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner, can that? You wanna go in order? That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go down to you, Shannon, because.
So, I just want to be clear. This project is in Mineral County. We are looking at the application of the road. That being said, I do understand the concerns of the residents that are out there with drainage. I work. In the environmental and construction field. Storm water must be contained. And cannot be pushed onto other property. Those are requirements of the federal and the state in DEP, Nevada Environmental Protection Agency. Hours of operation can be controlled from the county on the maintenance of the road, but the actual application and. The construction of the project itself. Is not within the confines of Lyon County. It is, that's Mineral County. And my suggestion to you as a concerned. Lyon County resident and also as a planning commissioner is to read the environmental impact statement. Studies are done. On the wildlife. And the construction feasibility. And as residents, I would suggest that you reach out. To your BLM representative. Your state lands representative. To really push those things and to keep the compliance of the permits when done. We can't address, we can't address that question. So all I would say is too, from a Lyon County standpoint, all we can, can have concern about. Is the paving of the road.
Okay, before I get to you, and, and you're a very important. Person, can I, can I get your, your comment, your feedback?
Sure, I'm, I'm still concerned about the uh routing of this whole line. I mean, if we have designated coordinators. Um. Our, our land around here is conducive to solar power fields and a number of other things. So if we follow this precedent, then all of them could have their own borders like a spider web. I think they should be confined to the, the existing ones that are there for that purpose.
Okay, uh, Michael.
Yeah, my concern is the disruption that it's gonna have on people. And on lifestyle, you know, something that hasn't been mentioned that looked. And on lifestyle, you know, something that hasn't been mentioned that looked through the notes that it's done to us. Uh, having been off, come off of a productive ranch, that kind of traffic, you know, especially with milk cows and chickens. Is going to affect, and this is their livelihood. I mean, in my mind, this is, you know, family owned business. Uh.
That have established, they've been here.
Correct, and, and we're not giving consideration to that. We're not giving consideration. Uh, you know, to the impact that uh, you know, it's having on lives or as Mark said, quality of life. Uh. And I'm really conservative there.
Loretta?
No, actually, everyone said everything I was thinking. Thank you.
I, uh, yes. All right.
We don't control. The time that they spent building the solar. But we have full control over our roads.
Right.
We want to put a limit on when they can use off roads. I think we should never do that. I don't know if they're. You, I mean, you know, this stuff because.
Well, we're going to hear from our county manager here in just a minute, okay? Um, and you know, I really appreciate everybody's comments. Uh, you know, they really were impactful and they were, you know, heard. Uh. Especially, I think, um, Mr. Ryan's comments about, you know, coordinating. You know, some of the activities that are going on, you know, with all of these other agencies and companies, you know, that use that road. I, there's, you know, and I don't know who would be in charge of that, but if there was a way to do that better, I, I think that. That is partially a solution, but let's hear from our county manager.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So I do want to let the commission know that uh. Lyon County was a cooperating agency um as they went through the NEPA process. Um, for their solar field in Mineral County. Um. We made several, several suggestions. We um. Requested that BLM take a look at alternative access roads and um. Ultimately, they decided to move forward with this as the preferred alternative. Um, with access through. Which Walker Road. So address your question, the, the road is a public road. You, I can't tell anybody what's um. What time they can use the road. I mean, no more than I can come to your street and tell you, you can't use it between the hours of. Eight P M and. Six in the morning, that, I mean, we can't. Can't condition that. What we can do through the conditional use process is address the. Impacts, potential impacts, and that's um. That's why we have the proposed condition and then to pave the road to do the maintenance agreements and everything. Now, if uh, you know, I, I hear um Commissioner Sarasola's. Concerns regarding drainage and we can certainly either amend one of the current conditions or add a condition in there or recommend that the board add a condition in there. To address that now, um. And make sure that that's. That's included, um. Or some of the other. Um, again, I think, I think that would probably, probably address what you're concerned.
That was one of mine too.
But. You know, as. The commissioner pointed out, the majority of the project was within. Uh, mineral term sales. We have to, we have to work with that.
All right. Thank you for that. So. If we're looking at a condition and, and I, I do think that we need to. Um, perhaps maybe consider. Drainage. Uh, maybe some um. I don't know, uh, traffic controls. I don't know if you could, you know, do speed bumps. I don't know what you could do, but I know more discussion probably could happen. Before this thing moves forward.
Senior Planner Nash just uh. Ended out that in condition nine A, it does say the roadway shall include drainage improvements and additional signage. Um, I don't know if that needs to be more clear. Um, I don't know if that meets your intent, but.
It meets my intent, except I just want to make sure that when it's, when the design is being reviewed. That the drainage is considered from top to bottom and not just. What will change in this one perspective of, of what the roadway is going to go through? Because when you do take an impervious. Material. You're going to get sheeting and you're going to have more drainage flow down. It's going to, water will always take the easiest path. And we need to know that where this water is outletting at. That we have the proper containment of it because. It will become an issue and it will, it will bear itself out over time. And it's not something I also think that Lyon County in general should be responsible for. Once the road is established, and I know that there's a design standard that it's a commercial, it's going to have to be designed to a hundred year flat. There's certain requirements for that and that's why they do that. Um, but just make sure that we're taking a good, hard look at where this water will travel to and how we're going to contain it if we do get those. Storm situations.
Yeah, that harm isn't come, you know, do no harm. I, I think that's a good uh. You know, the doctors use it. Maybe we should use it in our everyday lives as well.
I, I, there is one other thing, um, you know, I, I think a condition um. Definitely be in order if the uh commission chooses um. So require them to work with the irrigation district or coordinate with the irrigation district, but um. Is it? I didn't mean close enough, I guess.
Okay, Ralph has, has a, do you have a question or a concern or a comment or?
To Commissioner Jones's point about hours of use on the roads. Um, Lyon County can't. Control who uses the road when, but just like previous projects, we can control. We put, put a condition out there that says what are their hours of operation, which kind of accomplishes the same thing. He mentioned twelve hours a day. That seems a little excessive. What about eight hours a day?
So I don't, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, I'm not sure that we can condition hours of a. Construction project in another county.
We just did on the one in Dayton.
But that's the same county.
And Lyon County.
No, but, okay. I'm talking about the construction of the power line.
Well, the power lines. None of it here, the road is south of here.
If Commissioner Sarasola, if you read the E I S, it will have conditions of operations within the Bureau of Land Management permit as well as the environmental impact statement. There will be conditions. As the road construction goes, I believe Lyon County has a seven A M to seven P M. Timeframe. In there already in their ordinances for construction and I don't believe we're looking to change that, correct?
Uh, we can, we could.
Yeah, but it's spelled out in the condition.
I just saw, I just saw Mr. Hallman shake his head. No, we're not looking. Looking to change that.
Yeah. Yeah, but we can, we can certainly add that as a condition, just so it's spelled out very clearly.
Okay.
Um, that, but if the board.
Did you have something else, Connie? I saw, I thought I saw you raise your hand.
I don't have a map of the state of Nevada. Why wasn't this project approached from Mineral County? And now there was the construction.
What?
I don't know what the terrain is or whatever, you know.
Lisa.
I believe Lisa Nash, Senior Planner. I believe I can address if I, if I'm incorrect, the applicant can correct me, but um. It is on our side of the mountains that are running down Mineral County, so. It, it, this is the access to that particular. Area.
Before you go to Rose.
Okay.
So. We give in, so okay, you've come down our road. Because somebody else says we can't come down there. Right? I mean, there's, they're saying that wildlife people don't want to come in that border with their traffic.
And then, well, that we're, the wildlife issue is in the north where the gentai is. Where the wildlife issue isn't down in the road in the southern area.
Okay, so.
It's a different.
Are we the only route? Is that the only route to get out and dump whatever they're doing that they need to do?
So a, as the applicant mentioned, um. When they went through the NEPA process with BLM. They looked at different alternatives and this what, this route was the preferred alternative. The applicant did mention in his uh presentation earlier that there is a BLM road or. Do you want to, would you, let me have the applicant address their secondary app.
Uh, you know, where are the power? Uh, so there is no alternative access from Mineral County. That was something we looked at, uh, no existing roadway in our close mountains there. Uh, there is secondary access. There are existing transmission lines. Running north, south um by our site. And uh, we will be using. Those existing uh roads on BLM land as a secondary access that gets us to Highway ninety-five. Uh, but that's, that's a longer, longer drive and it's a, not an improved road, so we're going to be doing some work. To straighten that out. Um, but, and that's, that's going to be used for up to twenty-five percent of the construction traffic.
Did you have a question? No. Anybody have any questions? Is your name Mr. Albert? Before you sit down. No, you've already had your three minutes. You can't, you can't speak again. He, he's. Pardon?
It's not an approval, but it is.
Okay. But you can't, you, we can't get into discussion with the audience. I'm sorry. Um, okay, Lisa?
No, I'm. Uh. If you guys are, are wanting to add conditions, we can. Add a statement and I will add conditions before we go. Before the board of commissioners for.
All right.
The couple of.
I know there are at least three condition, uh, three commissioners. Listening in on this discussion and so they'll be looking for that.
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there um? Any other discussion commissioners? Are we ready to make a motion? All your emotion?
Madam Chair, before we do that, I, so let's just clarify, we'd like to make sure that they adhere to the county. Hours of construction. Is one.
Okay, so we can condition.
We can condition with that. The second issue is drainage.
Oh, too many issues. I'll make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Sure.
All right. Based on the aforementioned findings with the applicant's concurrence to planning commission. I would recommend to continue the request of Libra, Libra Solar for a conditional use permit to allow the construction, operation. And maintenance of approximately four point seven miles, three hundred and forty-five K V generation. Tie line gentai connecting to the Libra Solar project to the Fort Churchill substation on state of Nevada and Bureau. Of land management lands located. On one hundred and thirteen point acre portion of five parcels totaling seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight point thirteen acres. The parcels are located on the north side of the Sierra Way, approximately two point two five miles east of Highway ninety-five, alternate. And nine point five miles north of Urington. Into R R five, fifth rural residential twenty acre zoning district in Mason Valley. A P N zero one four dash zero nine one dash zero. Seven. O one four, one three one dash oh one, oh one four dash one four one dash oh one. Dash oh three dash oh four P L Z. Two zero two four dash oh seven one. For. Let's say a hundred and twenty days.
Do I hear a second? For a continuance? Motion dies for lack of second.
Right.
I'll hear another motion. Can I hear another motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, before we make a second motion, I just want to make sure that we're covering all the, like, the concerns. So, because I, I want to make a motion. To move forward with certain conditions, but I want to make sure that we're getting all the conditions met that we're concerned about. So one is hours of opera, hours of work.
Do you even make the motion?
I will, but I need to make sure that we're clarifying, covering everything. So one is we're concerned about hours of operations during the construction of the paving road and the work. Two is the drainage for the direct length of the roadway. And what was our third concern?
Um, condition of working with uh the irrigation districts on the gentai as well as the road. Currently, it just. That condition. Make sure we include them in the road. It doesn't make sure we include them in the gentai.
And, and tell me the irrigation district.
Yeah, Walker River Irrigation.
Walker River, thank you.
I'll know when you're ready.
Sorry, trying to make it concise.
No worries.
Of course, I was just thinking.
Oh, you're the one.
I know, I have a packet today. Commissioner Sarasola, I'm making a recommendation to move forward to the count, Board of County Commissioners for the requests from Libra Solar for conditional use permit. For an approximately four point seven miles long, three hundred and forty-five K V generation tie line gentai connecting the Libra Solar project to the Fort Churchill substation. On state of Nevada and the Bureau of Land Management lands located northeast of the existing Fort Churchill substation in Mason Valley and portions of five. Parcels measuring approximately one hundred and thirteen point eight acres out of a total acreage of approximately seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight point one three acres. These are to include A P N's zero one four dash zero nine one dash zero seven. Zero one four dash one three one dash zero one. Zero one four dash one four one dash zero one, zero three and zero four. P L Z dash two zero two four dash zero seven one. The additional. Requirements would be. That during the paving and the construction of the road. That the applicant must adhere to the Lyon County hours of construction. And that work on Sunday. Must be approved with consent by Lyon County. The drainage must be reviewed and stormwater and runoff control for the length of the totally paved new road must be. Designed for. And we have a condition that the applicant worked with the Walker River Irrigation District. Um, during this operation and. The process of paving this access road.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, um, I would like to suggest that you add to the hours of operation, your first condition. Both the gentai area and the. Road.
Which would include the gentai area and the actual paving of the access, county access road.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Second, okay, we've got a second from Loretta. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Three ayes? Okay.
Opposed.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Four opposed. So motion. Dies. For lack of votes.
It fails.
Failed. It fails.
Madam Chair, I got a question, please. Can we pull number nine for further discussion and approve all the rest of the conditions? And let, and forward that to the commissioners with this recommendation to. Look harder into number nine for us.
I don't, I don't, you can. You know.
I'm being suspicious.
Hold on, he's going to talk to the. Deputy District Attorney.
Sorry, recommendation of denial, so no. Uh, we'll have to go to the Board of County Commissioners. That's a recommendation.
Pardon?
Okay. He was asking, excuse me, Andrew Haskin, so he was asking if we could, if. The commission. Could um change the recommendation or the, the conditions with a second motion, but because the previous uh. Motion failed, it's a recommendation of denial to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, thank you for that. All right.
There's one last thing, um.
Okay.
I will. Transmit, of course, as much of this as I can to the planning or to the Board of Commissioners and as you mentioned, some are online, but we do need you to reference which findings. Um, those who voted against, which findings do you feel it doesn't meet?
Yes, the four of you who voted against this, go to the findings. And state which ones. Specifically that you are against.
So we're looking at conditions one through twelve?
Yes.
Not the conditions, the findings.
Okay, findings B, the proposed use is compatible with the. The character and integrity of adjacent developments and neighborhoods. And includes improvements, modifications, either onsite or within the public right of way to mitigate development. Related adverse impacts such as traffic noise, odors. Visual nuisance or other similar adverse effects adjacent to developments. And neighborhoods, so. Basically, when you're talking twelve hours a day, twelve days a week or seven days a week. Uh. I I think that's part of it.
For me, it's, uh, findings A, excuse me, B through E. I'm having an issue with.
And I'm having issues with C. It will not generate vehicle or traffic which cannot be accommodated by the existing planned and conditioned road.
And. Uh, I'm having an issue with B through E. And include G in that also.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask staff a question? Commissioner Sarisola. Ms. Nash, could you please explain to me? How working within these hours of operation doesn't meet, like what? What is an actual approved? Level of work? Between the hours of seven and seven, which is approved Lyon County. Use.
We, I can address this, like in recent, the C U P that came up recently, that was discussed and. We can. State that that's when people can be on site, that's when operations can start, they can start warming up. We can restrict it to that level. Um, traditionally, operations have meant. Activities actually occurring on the site. It hasn't always included. Restricting, warming up trucks, getting things ready to roll, and if that's what you're referring to. Yes, I believe that can be added.
I think we've got Deputy, um. Alyssa Fogel.
Good afternoon, yes, Alyssa Fogel, Deputy District Attorney. I represent you guys.
Thank you.
Not appropriate to make those questions during the person, because they're not as to this particular agenda.
Agenda item, okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, I should have stopped that.
She's handy to have around.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so since the the motion failed, we're going to move on to item number eight. And thank you. Uh, and this is for discussion only. We'll get to here from. The Community Development Director.
Good morning, Gavin Anderson, Lyon County Community Development Director, um, for the record, just have two brief announcements. One of them, we still have open. The planning commission. But just wanted to, um, notify the commission and the public, um. That, uh. Those interested in applying to serve on the planning commission must submit an application to the county manager's office by five P M on December sixteenth. Twenty twenty four to be included in the agenda packet. Applications can be found on the Lyon County website, um, completed applications can be submitted via email to Ms. Erin Lopez. Um, or by mail or in person to the county manager's office located here at twenty seven South Main Street, Urington, Nevada. Um, those applications that are mailed must be received prior to the agenda posting or meeting on December nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um. Last notification is we also have a, um, opening on vector control board, so Lyon County is seeking to fill an open position on the vector control board. This volunteer board plays a critical role. And advising on and overseeing programs to manage and control vector borne diseases. Uh, such as those spread by mosquitoes and other pests to protect the public health within the community. Uh, for more information or submit an application, please contact Erin Lopez. At county manager's office. Without him, open to questions.
Thank you. Hey, uh, Commissioner comments and agenda requests. I'll start. I just, I just want to let Connie. Uh. Cause Nikki. And Michael Carlson. I know what a pleasure it has been working with you. And I thank you for your service and I wish you well. Okay, any other comments?
I'll second that. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to work with you gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Just thank you for both of you.
But I think we've seen a lot of room for it here. Basically, so.
Thank you for that. Is there any public participation at this moment? Seeing none, before I adjourn, I'll just wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It is ten forty three and we're adjourned.